Good afternoon, and thank you for joining our wonderful work session. We are convened, and it's so nice to see everyone. So, tonight's discussion is going to be on strategic plan in the district calendar, but before we move into our work session topics, we will start with any announcements that any of our board members have. Ms. Broke? Mr. Hayes? Mr. Pinkston?
None.
Ms. Shepard?
Oh, good. That means I get to make a lot.
I have control of the mic.
Okay. I do have a few. Last Thursday morning, I spent a morning with the 4th graders at Andrew Jackson Elementary School. Dr. Carol Busey, who is the author of their textbook, was there, and even though she teaches on the collegiate level, she looked like she was right at home with these 4th graders. And it was a real treat to see her and to see the textbook is beautiful, and to be able to meet one of the authors of the textbooks that we often approve. So, that was really a lot of fun. Also, last Thursday, I attended the director's PAC meeting, and I have to tell you that even though all the principals haven't made their assignments, it was well-attended. I thought Shelley Baldwin did a great job. I don't know if she's here tonight or not, but she did a really good job, and she made great snacks, and they were very popular. And our McGabbic PAC meeting will be held on Monday, the September 9th, at McGabbic High School. Our own Dr. Jay Steele will be the featured speaker at the Old Hickory Chamber of Commerce luncheon next Tuesday at Dupont Hadley Middle School. And also, the Old Hickory Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring their yearly Taste of the Towns, which will be held the following Thursday, again at Dupont Hadley Middle School. This is a great event. You will not leave hungry, and it's a great -- the proceeds go to the three schools that reside in Old Hickory, so it's a great fundraiser for those schools. And last but not least, the Donaldson Heritage Farmer's Market is going to double the SNAP, formerly known as food stamps, for in the months of September and October. So, if you're a SNAP customer, they will double it up to $20. So, if you want, you'll get $40 worth of goods at their wonderful farmer's market. There's at least 50 vendors there every Friday. It's a great event. So, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Pinkston, you had something?
Yeah, I just overlooked it a second ago, but just want to remind fellow board members, the public, our friends in the media, that we will have a Budget and Finance Committee hearing on Tuesday, September 10th, at 3:30 PM in at Bransford Avenue. It probably hasn't been posted on the public agenda just yet. We just determined that today, but we will continue our discussions about the preliminary projections for the 2014-15 fiscal year and opportunities for making adjustments. Thank you. September 10th, 3:30 PM here.
Ms. Hayes?
Thanks for coming back around. Time flies when you're having fun. So, it feels like forever ago, but I just wanted to, I guess, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank the members of the Diversity Task Force who met for the first time on the 15th of August. It hasn't even been two weeks. We had a handful of folks from the board attend. Great participation from all of the members who were appointed to the board, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody for showing up. Dr. Register outlined to all of us when we recruited these people that they were to serve a year, and in the meeting, he changed his mind and outlined it was a five-year commitment. So, I'll leave that up to our appointees to negotiate with our director and the fellow members of that task force. But from all of us, thank you guys for the first meeting and what hopefully will be some really great meetings in the fall and spring and the years ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Kim? Ms. Bearin?
Sure. Dan Mills Elementary is -- they launched a challenge last week called "I Am Dan Mills", and they are trying to raise money in order to put a smart board in every classroom. So, Dan Mills Elementary School was established in 1937, and they have -- the alumni have started a Facebook page called "I Am Dan Mills Alumni", and they have gleaned much information about who Dan Mills was and how he impacted the community and East Nashville as a whole. They -- each of -- each family is asked to either raise or donate $100. So, the kids are doing things like bake sales, yard sales, and different ways of raising that money. So, for people who would like to know more about that, you can go to iamdanmills.com. The challenge will end October 30th. Also, the rewards list was decided and announced this past week. We had 12 Metro schools that were named reward schools, which are the top 5% of the schools across the state. One school in our district got it for performance and progress, which was Lachlan Elementary. So, I want to say a big congratulations to Lachlan. The others were Glendale, Percy Priest, Head Middle, Margaret Allen Middle, Meg's Middle, Martin Luther King Jr., Hume Fog, Kip Academy, Liberty Collegiate, Nashville Prep, and STEM Prep Academy. Algebra scores at Hunter's Lane were up 175% from last year. The story was featured this past week on Channel 5 School Patrol, featuring Garrett Schneider. So, congratulations to the teachers and staff there at Hunter's Lane. Major appreciation to Grif and Technology for the gift of 30 new Mac Mini computers to Hunter's Lane. And thanks to Alan Coverstone and staff at Robert Churchwell Museum Magnet today. I went through a tour there and got to get into the classrooms and see students learning, and Alan was very kind to answer all my many questions about autonomy and just specific questions that I had throughout the tour. So, thanks for that, yeah.
Dr. Brennan?
And I would like to say congratulations to the Antioch Bears. They took the trophy back to Antioch in the 37013 Bowl. We'll see what Cambridge has to offer next time. So, having said that, Dr. Register, we will move right into our discussion, strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been looking forward to this presentation since the last time we had a conversation and pretty much a deep dive into the mechanics of the strategic plan that's been a work-in-progress, actually, since last February in many respects. Tonight, we want to take a higher-level view of the strategic plan, a public presentation, if you will, that -- and you have -- there is a PowerPoint. We chose not to lower the big screen. It would be more effective on the big screen, but for the sake of our audience behind us, that's not a very good way to do a presentation in a board meeting. So, you should have a copy of the PowerPoint. Visha has a copy of the PowerPoint to distribute if you don't already have it. I'm going to do the presentation on the PowerPoint, and then I have some very capable help. I have a student, a parent, a teacher, and a principal who are going to react to the strategic plan for just a few minutes at the end, and I think you'll find them to be quite informed and interested in seeing the presentation. So, as we start with the cover slide, we've dubbed our strategic plan "Education 2018: Excellence for Every Student." And let me get to the bottom line, or the final slide, if I may now, and say that our goal is by 2018, we expect to be the highest-performing urban school system in the country. Let's just cut right to the headline there and get that out. The transformation that we're looking at is basically two things, and you've heard us talk about this before, but transforming our system by empowering schools, empowering principals, raising autonomy there, and by restructuring or reorganizing the central office. That's a changing role of the central office. That's the vehicle for which we will transform the system. That central office restructuring and empowerment of schools and principals has been a work-in-progress for some months now. The changing role of the central office is recognized as being developing an effective educational support system. And the next slide shows you a little bit of what we see as that educational support system. Developing a good knowledge base for instruction, and a couple of examples that fit that that are systemic developing projects. Implementation of the Common Core. That's a great challenge for us over the last year and going into the next two or three years, and implementing the Common Core with fidelity in all of our schools and all of our classrooms. Another example of developing the knowledge base is something that we're quite involved in at the present time, and that's K-12 Literacy Initiative. Very important for our district, and as you know, our literacy scores have been flat, as have been those in the state. Developing that K-12 Literacy Initiative, we think, will get us moving on a very -- very much an upwards trajectory. Systems and operations. And again, you know that we've begun work and are into implementation on a new approach to human capital development in our district. The information technology and the use of the data warehouse is very important. Systems that we're developing and other support systems that the district's brought about. And then finally, accountability measures, and that's the academic performance framework. You were first introduced to that last fall and early winter, and we're a matter of two or three, or maybe four weeks away from rolling out the next phase of that academic performance framework. We're quite excited about having this year, for the first time, three years of data to fit into that academic performance framework. Developing a collaborative culture in the district is extremely important. School systems typically are not collaborative. School systems typically are work in isolation. People work in isolation. Classroom teachers go in classrooms and close the door. That's not the way you solve the complex problems that we face today in a diverse urban school system. So, developing a collaborative culture. Thanks, Mr. Hayes, for mentioning the diversity plan. Implementing that diversity plan with fidelity is important for our school system. And developing what we think is the best charter authorization and oversight work of any district in this area as a part of that educational support system. I'll slow down just a little bit on this one because I want to really focus on what we consider to be the lever of change, what really propels the change or the transformation in the school system, and we have defined that as personalized -- personalizing learning for every one of our 83,000 students now. You see a definition here. It means that, and don't take the words lightly or the concept lightly, we want every student to be engaged and to take ownership in their own learning, to take responsibility for their own learning. That might be easy to see at a high school level. We're talking about K-12. It is important for every student to understand, to be engaged, and to have ownership in their learning responsibilities, and for us to tailor-make or customize learning to meet the diverse needs of our learners in MNPS. And finally, the third component, which I think is so important, is for our young people to develop multiple meaningful relationships with the adults in our schools, and frankly, for the adults to have good relationships in our schools. So, personalized learning is a result of that. There's three core strategies that we're concentrating on in this strategic plan to bring this about. The first is quality teaching. The strategic recruitment of the very best teachers that we can get in every classroom, developing good compensation plans, strategic compensation, professional development, constructive evaluation to raise practice. Quality teaching is very important as we recruit, retain, and empower great teachers in our district. Equity and excellence is the next basic concept. We have to target resources. One size doesn't fit all. Different schools have different needs. Different children have different needs. We're looking at student-based budgeting. We're implementing a system of student-based budgeting and targeting supports to fit the needs of individual students. Many of you have heard Tony Majors talk about the Community Achieves approach that we're taking. Some schools need a lot of help, and we need to tailor-make that for the schools in our district. And then finally, transformational leadership. Increasing principal flexibility and autonomy, but raising the level of professionalism of our administrators across the district. The role of the principal is a key in developing a transformational leadership strategy. We think the principal's the key element. You're going to get to hear from one in just a few minutes. So, those are the basic strategies that drive, or that we drive in the system to lever that change to personalized learning. When we personalize learning, our students will grow, achieve, and be empowered. That leads to student success in college, career, and life. And let me speak briefly about each of those components. Grow. Question, are all students growing academically, socially, and emotionally every year? Not just a standardized test, not just academically. Are we helping young people develop socially? Are we helping young people develop emotionally? Do we have measures by which we can monitor that? And if you look at the goals that we have, that you've been involved in setting, for us, the goals for the grow measure are 60% of our students will advance at least one achievement level on annual state assessments. 58% of our students will meet or exceed their peers statewide in academic growth on annual state assessments. And that academic growth, 58%, that's a growing number. The state's improving, and we're a little bit below state average now, so we've got to pick up speed. We've got to achieve at a faster level than the state as a whole. The next point is student ratings, and this, the grow goals. Student ratings of their sense of belonging and connection to the school will increase annually. This is the emotional development and emotional support that we've been talking about. As you know, we're one of seven cities in the country that's a part of the Castle Foundation Grant for social-emotional learning. We're very pleased to be a part of that, and they're working with us to help develop these goals. Student ratings of their self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making will increase annually. So, we -- and with survey instruments and some instruments that we're identifying now, we will measure this on an annual basis. Let's look at the concept of achieve. Are all students achieving high academic standards? And our achievement goals that we've discussed with you as a board goes by 2018. 71% of students will be proficient or advanced on annual state assessments. 40% of elementary and middle school students will project to a score of 21 or higher on the ACT. 50% of high school students will score 21 or higher on the ACT composite or the comparable 990 on the SAT. 75% of high school students will be enrolled in at least one course for college credit. 100% of enrolled students will take the associated exams, and 75% will pass the exam. 88% of our high school students will graduate within four years plus one summer. 100% of our graduates will complete a capstone experience in their senior year. The empower goal, are all students empowered? And I'll slow down on this one again. By having a voice, a choice, and ownership in their own learning experiences. And we think this is a very important component of the personalization that we're talking about. These goals are in development, in progress now. The percentage of students rating their school learning experience positively increases annually. The percentage of students and families rating their school's program favorably will significantly increase from 2014-15. 100% of K-12 students will demonstrate leadership skills as measured by school-level evaluation rubrics, and 100% of students will set learning goals and track their own learning progress. We have a theory of action. We're going to present that to you now. It is a graphic, and this is the foundation that we think's very important. When we personalize learning, our students will grow, achieve, and be empowered, leading to student success for all of our students. The more we focus on, and this is really important to emphasize, the more we focus on those core strategies, quality teaching, transformational leadership, and equity and excellence, the more our students will succeed. By 2018, every student will exemplify five characteristics, and you've heard us talk about these five characteristics a little bit. We'd like to show you these again. Characteristics of a 4th grade graduate, what we want our students who are leaving elementary schools to exhibit. By the end of elementary school, every student will achieve academically, and that's to be on track to reach the Explorer benchmarks, that's 16 on Explorer. Be empowered by a sense of belonging and connection to the school. That's very important for young people, for young children. The social and emotional learning skills readiness is shown on the graph. To have an understanding of safe and responsible uses for all aspects of technology, a technology plan or goals for each of our elementary students. To be an engaged, productive, and caring community member, and to be prepared for the transition to middle school. The middle school is a primary focus for us now. We've got a lot of work to do in middle school, and we're going to focus on that now and going forward. And this is -- middle school's a primary focus because of its importance for every child's healthy growth and development. Our middle school students can expect to be challenged, nurtured, supported, and encouraged in all aspects of school life. By the end of middle school, every student will achieve academically. That's a score at least a 16 on the Explorer, which is a track to 21 in high school. Engage in a school activity that connects them to their interests and/or other students. And let me pause on this one. Middle school adolescent development is very important, and we think it's very important that students at that age be actively engaged in extracurricular activities or something besides just academics. And our goal is to engage every student in the arts, in music, in athletics, in some meaningful activity that allows them to connect with their peers and be led by adults. This is a very important, 100% goal. Every student actively engaged in middle school. To be fluent in the use of technology by the time they leave 8th grade. To be able to discover and understand the various technologies and apply them to learning. And to complete at least one service learning project that connects them to the larger community. Another very important characteristic for young people in their social and emotional development. And to be prepared for the rigors of the high school experience that they're getting ready to move into. Characteristics of our high school students? Thank you, Vanna. Okay, she didn't turn it around. We have successfully, and this is the first of the characteristics that we've developed. This was developed some time ago as we developed, established the five characteristics of a high school graduate when we implemented the small learning communities in our schools. By graduation, every high school student will achieve academically. That's score at least a 21 on the ACT or 990 on the SAT. This is a -- and this is a hard number to talk about at the high school level, but this is a minimum for academically advanced students. That's why we place such an important focus on individual goal-setting. It may not be possible for some of our children who have significant challenges, and we understand that, and that's why this is adjusted for unique circumstances of our children. But our goal is for everyone to reach at least a 21 on the ACT. To create a 10-year plan for their high school and post-secondary experiences. We want our young people in around 8th grade to start thinking long-term about what they want to do, and for them to be responsible for developing plans as they move into high schools. At least one course online. Rigorous year-long capstone project, preparing them for applied research and writing, which is a necessity for success in college and career. And to successfully complete at least one course for college credit and/or acquire a recognized professional certification. This plan really brings together all of our efforts for students in our district, and our goal is to transform all schools into high-performing schools that will demonstrate excellence through the academic, social, and emotional success of every student. Every graduate will be prepared for college and career. What the board can expect. Quarterly updates and a dashboard measuring progress. An initiative to communicate the plan to the community with a call for support, and fidelity in execution by Metro employees and our partners. And by executing this plan with fidelity, we think that we will be the highest-performing urban school district in the United States by the year 2018. That's the formal presentation. That's the PowerPoint. I want to ask now Shelley Baldwin to come forward, Chuck Pertle to come forward, Clint Wilson to come forward, and Jacob Maldonado to come forward, and I'll introduce each of them. Shelley is a parent, as you heard earlier. She's a president of our PAC organization. Chuck Pertle is a graduate of our Teacher Leadership Institute, the TLI, but he didn't get to enjoy that too long as a teacher. He was just promoted to Assistant Principal at Madison Middle School this year, but we're still using him as a teacher voice today. Clint Wilson is a principal at Glencliff High School, and Jacob is a senior at Glencliff High School. So, I want to welcome all of you, and that probably needs to be cut on, and we'll start with Shelley, and I'm just going to ask each of these people to react quickly to what they see from their points of view about the strategic plan.
I'm sorry I didn't bring cookies. I'll bring them next time. But I'm a little giddy that there's no three-minute buzzer. I promise I won't abuse it. As you know, I am the chair for this year for the Parent Advisory Council, and you've heard me say this before, but I'll repeat it for everybody else. I am the parent of two children, a 3rd grader and a 4th grader that attend our neighborhood school. My eldest daughter has autism and an intellectual disability, and my youngest daughter, Ashley, is on the other end with a high IQ. Having two kids on opposite ends of the learning curve gives me a unique perspective for the approach for public education. There is a saying that I came across from William B. Yeats that applies to this learning model after I heard about it, and it goes like this. "Education is not the filling of a pale, but rather the lighting of a fire." And in my view, traditional education fills the pale. This model lights a fire. It empowers our kids by giving them accountability, self-reliance, and helps them to set goals for their, not only their education, but their future, and it supports them in the attainment of those goals. The other night at our PAC meeting, Dr. Register indicated to us that a majority of our students fall into one of the many categories that are indicators for achievement gap. And obviously, my eldest daughter is one of those students, but her disabilities entitle her to an individualized education plan, and that IEP, we set up goals, and that allows the teachers to work as a team towards those goals. They do interventions, modifications, supports, tools, whatever she needs to get her to that goal and to keep moving forward is what they do. This model gives a similar circumstance to my child who does not have an IEP and has the higher IQ. It empowers her by allowing her to identify her strengths and weaknesses, set her education goals, and then the staff and faculty support her. support her in those goals as she reaches to attain them. I'm sorry. I've lost my place. There's, I'm sorry. Yeah. She becomes the driver of her education, and I think that is extremely important instead of just a passive recipient. There is another quote that applies to this, also from Yeats. "Happiness is neither virtue nor pleasure, nor this thing, nor that. It is simply growth. We are happy when we are growing." And this speaks to me on a very personal level. I would love it if we could get away from equating success in education and in life as 100% of our kids getting a certain test score, or 100% of our kids being proficient, or 100% of our kids getting a 21 on the ACT. We are all unique in our abilities, and we will each shine if we are treated as individuals and not categorized into a particular place because of a simple test score. Public education to me is about growth of the whole child, not just their test score. And it is a means to give every student the tools, the knowledge, and the support that they need to become productive members of society. And this presentation and this model, take it a step further in my mind by empowering these kids with tools that they can use in their future that can make a huge impact. They are accountable. They are able to set goals for themselves. They are self-reliant, and they are supported in doing that from now until they leave school. I'd like to see us as a district move towards empowering our students to define success for themselves instead of us telling them what success is. And I think that initiative moves us in that direction by giving every kid the tools that they need to rise above the life circumstances that they might find themselves in. And I think not only will that have a huge impact on their lives, but it will impact the district, our community, and Nashville as a whole. And I hope you all see the value in it.
Once again, my name is Chuck Pertle. I'm a new assistant principal at Madison Middle. I like this plan because it not only focuses on the academic rigor in our schools, but it encompasses the whole child or the whole student. When I think of quality teaching, quality teaching environments provide a safe and positive environment where relationships are being built and where students are responsible, self-motivated, and self-evaluating in their learning processes. Teachers in those environments, they're facilitators of learning. They're student-centered, and it's standards-based instruction happening all the time. Students are engaged actively in their learning. They have a voice and a choice in the options to show their mastery in the skill and the standards that are being taught. Quality teaching involves ongoing student assessment to check for mastery and progression while informing students, parents, and others about their student achievement. When I think of this plan, not only are the students empowered, but the teachers are empowered as well by the principals. And the principals are empowered by lead principals and other support groups in the district. So you have an alignment all the way from kindergarten, not only to 12th grade, but through the employees of the district as well. So we're all moving in the same direction, and that's student-centered education for every student, no matter their ability or disability. And I can say as a now-principal working with my wonderful administrative team in the Madison community, we look forward to implementing this plan with fidelity because we believe in it, and it will hold true. Thank you.
So I have to, you get, we met yesterday afternoon to go over the plan, and I want to tell you that these folks were, and please check with them. They were not given a speech. They were not asked to say any particular thing. They were asked to react. And Chuck gave a great commercial for Teacher Leadership Institute yesterday, and he didn't do it today, so I'm going to ask you to do it today.
Okay. As Dr. Register said, I am a graduate of the Teacher Leadership Institute, which is a part of the Teacher Empowerment Program. And through that program, other like-minded teachers who sought out leadership opportunities were given the district's vision and the district's mission, and we were able to see what the district wanted for our students. And we were allowed to take that vision back into our schools. And I felt empowered during that year to impact my classroom because I saw teaching can be very, very, very overwhelming with the high-stakes standards that are in place right now. But it was a support system for not only me, but my fellow colleagues. And it not only impacted my students, it impacted the teachers that I taught with, and I look forward to impacting the school where I am right now.
Thanks, Chuck. This afternoon, I had the pleasure of sitting for about an hour with our lead principals. We now have a dozen lead principals in the district. Clint Wilson is one of our new lead principals for our district. And it was one of the most exhilarating conversations I've heard in quite a while about how to improve the practice of teaching and instructional leadership. And it was really focused on instructional leadership among those 12. And I want to turn it over to Clint and let him talk about the leadership.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I get passionate when I get to talk about my school, so hopefully I can not tear up. But for me, this plan really is the vision of where Glencliff's been heading, and it kind of, to me, is a nice, I guess, compliment to many of the things that we're doing for system transformation to help students grow, achieve, and empower, we've already been doing. I'm really going to focus on the three actions of system transformation. One is equity and excellence. For us, that's support in community schools. We provide a health clinic, which Mr. Pinkston has helped us fight to keep with zoning issues, to where if a kid's sick, we can take care of those needs so that they can learn. If a kid's hungry, we're going to provide food for them through backpacks to where they get fed because you can have the best lesson prepared in your class, but if kids are sick or hungry, it's not going to get there. So it's knowing what our kids need and providing those services for them. It's also really seeing diversity as our strength. Glencliff has 42 countries, 26 languages spoken, and we're making some great academic gains because our kids have taken ownership of that diversity. Instead of just an SGA, we have United Nations where every country is represented. They each have an equal say in school policy and procedures. They have a voice in the school. They come to me with things that they want to do to make the school better instead of me going to them. And it's all kept in that area with high expectations for all. It begins with high expectations for myself and for my students. The next is quality teaching. This is my 11th year in administration, and I can say the plan that's in place with Human Capital and Dr. Register pushing for early hires is providing us with better teachers than we've ever had walking through our doors. And we know that's where change occurs in the classroom, is having a quality teacher for every kid. That's being done with great TFA candidates, National Teaching Fellows, and the early hire commitments from local universities. It's also changing the way we're having conversations about grades. I'm very passionate on this one. I don't want a parent-teacher conference where it's your kids failing because they didn't turn in two assignments. They need to turn these two worksheets in, and they're going to be passing. We wanted to change the conversation of your child's failing because they cannot graph any qualities. They can't solve multi-step equations. To do that, we had to change teaching. Now I walk in classrooms, and after kids take a test, they have a worksheet, and they're, I walked in the other day to an English class, and it's 1, 6, 12, 14, 20. And I'm like, what are you doing? Well, I'm looking to see what questions I got right on my test. And all these questions deal with this one standard. I got five out of six. I got mastery. Then on the next one, they got three out of six. They said, I didn't master this. So the conversation with that teacher is, we need to meet and have a one-on-one so that you know author's point of view. We're changing the conversations in our schools between our teachers and our kids. It's also collaborative planning. It's having PLCs where teachers work together. They look at student work. They know what kids are coming prepared with and what kids need to be prepared at the next level. So it's strategically having those conversations. It's having instructional rounds of walking around and monitoring. That's one area I feel a lot of times we fall short. We have great plans. We also have to have great monitoring, and we use instructional rounds for that. And last is transformational leadership. When I accepted this job, I don't always think inside the box. I like to take risks. And a lot of times, we know risk works well, and sometimes it doesn't. But with the new autonomy model, I'm able to take risks comfortably, but I also know that I have to show they're working. If they're not, I have to drop it and change it. But we are given autonomy to make decisions for our school. Glencliff is not like any other school. It's a home for me. It's a home for a lot of our kids. Our needs are not the same as other schools. With autonomy, we're able to meet the needs of Glencliff students. A lot of data conversations take place. With the Data Wall, individual conferences, we meet as an administrative team with individual students in our EOC tested courses, and we do action plans for them. We do goal-setting with them. We ask them, what are three things you're going to do to achieve that goal? By the time the third DEA test comes around, and I've met with that kid twice, they're coming to me, did I meet my goal? Did I get my score? Am I there? It's not us going to them anymore. They've taken ownership of their learning. It's also the continuous improvement model that's been brought in for us to use the eight-step process, to do the Plan Do Check Act with the Literacy Revolution. We know every test, kids need to be able to read to be successful. One of my APs called me today. I was at a training. And she goes, I was in a math class, and they were doing an article where they were dissecting the article, and kids had to give their viewpoint on it, happening in math. So reading's happening in every single classroom. And so we're given the opportunity to really take risks, but to do it in a way that, using best practices. Also, the networks that Dr. Register spoke of. Most of what we've done at Glencliff is not something that I came up with. It's something I stole from somebody. And I adapted that to make it work at Glencliff. The best way to do that is to network with other principals and go to their schools and see what they're doing well and take that into our schools. The networks allow us to have that conversation and that communication to see what's working in other schools that we can adapt for our own. So I appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to working this plan because I do see it being successful for our students.
And Jacob is a senior at Glencliff High School, and I see an ambassador for the school. Jacob.
Good evening. I want to start off by saying how honored and privileged I am to be here, meeting with you. I moved to Nashville, Tennessee around two years and a half. It was during the fall break of my sophomore year. I moved from a well-known city in Alabama, but due to the immigration law that Alabama had placed, my family was forced to move. My dad, always seeking the best opportunities for my family, decided to move to Illinois. Later, little did we knew that Chicago wasn't the greatest city to raise a family. The crime, the high crime rate scared my family, my dad especially away. So we decided to try Nashville, Tennessee, which is by far one of the best decisions my dad has made for me. I began Glencliff High School my sophomore year, and the moment I stepped into Glencliff, I felt welcome. They borrowed my change. I was greeted with the biggest smile, the warmest, like the warmest persons you will ever meet. I was given a tour, and the most important question they asked me is, what do you want to learn? They told me about the academies Glencliff had to offer. They told me about the programs, the after-school activities, all the help that they offer for me. And that was impressive because I went to so many schools that they never, they never asked me, hey, what do you need help on? What can we help you with so you can achieve your goals? I decided to join the Medical Academy, and through that academy, I have done so many things thanks to Glencliff. I was given the opportunity to do an internship at Mahairy Medical College during the summer of 2012. Through that internship, I gained many networks with doctors, professionals, psychiatrists, and psychologists. And me wanting to be a psychologist is really important to network at such a young age. Also, Glencliff has many after-school activities. I'm formerly the president of Latinos Achievers, and through that program, I was given the opportunity to be an intern at Bank of America Stunna Leaders, an internship that only 2200 people, I mean, 220 people get, and only 3% get accepted. I feel really honored. I worked downtown with the youth, helping them build bikes, and I really saw how the youth has an impact in Nashville, how we have to help them because we, the youth, are going to be the ones ruling Nashville. We're the ones making, you know, like the laws. So, but what, what better way to do it if we are informed and well-educated? With that being said, I believe this plan has an impact, and it has an impact on me already, and I'm pretty sure will have an impact on the rest of our students. Like the plan said, it forces us to be academically challenged and also socially challenged because it is important for one to be both prepared academically and socially, because I believe that once you're out in the real world, you're going to meet people who you might have a hard time dealing with. But we have to know how to deal with them because it is part of our job, and also academically, because we have to be well-trained in what we're doing.
I told Jacob just before the meeting that I really want to meet his father. I hope his father, I hoped his father was going to be here tonight, who moved from Alabama to Illinois to Nashville to find the right place to raise his family. And I admire his father. Jacob, what are your hopes for the future?
Good question.
I know the answer, by the way.
I want to become a psychologist, and I do my research, my homework. And I found out that Stanford is the best college to go to. So this fall, I'm applying to Stanford.
Good for you.
We, I really wanted to get a point of view from a teacher, a parent, a student, and a principal, a school leader, to really give you a reaction. And I promise you, these are their reactions to the plan. They had a meeting Friday without me for a few minutes, not Jacob, but the other three. And then they saw the PowerPoint presentation yesterday afternoon and have given your reaction to this. This really concludes our formal presentation. We'll stop now and see if you have any questions or comments of these folks or of some of our staff who have worked to put this together. Particularly, I want to note Lisa Wilshire and Tamara Fintris for their work on developing the plan. I know that Jay Steele's here and Chris and others who have been involved in this over the last few months. So with that, that concludes our formal presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
We'll start at this. Any questions or comments, Dr. Gentry? Okay, Dr. Brennan?
Excited about the strategic plan, and it has so many of the components of my philosophy of education. So I am just very pleased and looking forward to the implementation.
Thank you. Ms. Barron?
I just want to stand up and say, hooray. This is very exciting. When we looked at the strategic plan, it seemed like a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, there was so many confines around it. 20%, 30%, 40%, 50% of our kids, 60% of our kids. But today, Dr. Register, what I heard you say over and over again, all of our kids. All of our kids are going to be thinking about what it is they want to learn, be responsible for their own learning. All our kids are going to make progress. And that is exciting, that we're not, you know, no matter, no excuses, no holes barred. All students will learn. And the idea of meaningful learning, like Joanne said, that is very exciting because that's the only kind of learning to me that there is. And lighting a fire where the child just takes off because they're so excited. They can't wait to get to school because they're on fire with learning. My question is, well, another comment. Of course, we can't wait till high school. We can't wait till middle school. We have to start in kindergarten with kids taking responsibility for their own learning. And I'm sure that that will, part of that will come out. that, that, that will, part of that will come out when we talk about our, our K-12 literacy plan in a few weeks. When we, I think it's so important that we have time to collaborate. Principals tend to have more time than teachers. They have opportunities where they can leave their building and the assistant principals take over. But teachers, it's a little harder for teachers. What are some ideas that I'm sure you've considered, where teachers will have opportunities? Is it extending the day? At one point, I had a student teacher from Vanderbilt, when I was teaching at Kirkpatrick, and there was no time to talk. I mean, we were both busy all day long. So we started journals. I kept a journal, she kept a journal. And then at night, I'd take her journal home, and she would take mine, and we would respond to each other through writing. What are some ideas that, that you've already discussed that, that will help move our ability for teachers to have more time for collaboration?
Chuck and Clint both can probably answer that question. They're closer to the ground than I am. But let me say that collaboration is extremely important. We try to organize in teams, K-12, and really create an opportunity for teachers to work together. As long as we work in isolation, we lose. And so there have to be strategies to develop a collaborative effort and to develop people, professional development. Clint, a comment? Chuck?
At the high school level, with the academy model, we're on the block schedules. We have the A-B block. So on an A-day, all of our academy core teachers have the same planning period. On that day, they're talking about academy-specific information, working with business partners. They can actually call in one student, and all eight of his teachers will be sitting in that room. So if a kid's behind or having issues, they can call in and have those conversations with kids. So that's on an A-day. Then we've built it to where on our B-day, they have 90 minutes, and it's content. So first block, all English teachers. Second block, all math. Third, all social studies. Fourth, all science. To where those teachers can get together, and they can plan based on content. So English teachers can look at an English II project. English I can say, all right, I see where I can help build, build kids to get them ready for you. And English III can say, you know, I love the project, but I needed to get to this point for kids to be ready for me. And they can look at student work. They can plan together. All these, English II teachers can meet, and we can look and say, all right, this teacher did the best in literature. So maybe have that teacher work with the other ones, develop lesson plans. So we've done a lot creatively during the day to open up those conversations so that teachers can talk and collaborate together.
And at Madison, we moved to a four-by-four block schedule as well, where teachers every day have 90 minutes of planning. But what we did, we carved out 30 minutes for professional development, excuse me, and collaboration with those teachers, to help them with initiatives that are coming out, all the way from as simple as putting in grades into the grade book, but then also giving them that time to meet with each other and talk about student academic growth, other issues, behavior issues, exceptional education issues. But having that time where they can sit down and talk to each other and really collaborate a best practice to move in students.
Let me make a general comment, too. Last time we had a work session on this, we, we tried to do a deep dive to show you the depth of the strategic plans and the, the action strategies that we were developing. And there's, you have a handout that refers back to that to some extent. But the, the specific, there are action plans that are developed that are very extensive. That's what the months of work has been, coming out of four years of MMPS achieves, frankly. So it goes very deep, and there are very intentional strategies here that are focused around these. So this handout, again, gives you the strategies and the outcomes for students. And you can manipulate this. You can go on your computer, and you can log into this and dive very deeply into numerous strategies that are being put into action. The other, the other thing that's really important about this plan is that we are connecting school improvement plans that are required by the state to this plan, so that there will be, there is only one plan. So that everything that we do is really, it really ties into and is connected to this strategic plan. And, and we've been talking about that for a few years now, but we're really able, with this document, with this plan, we're really able to pull that together now.
Would you, is there someone here that could answer the question about collaboration for teachers at elementary level?
Teachers at elementary level, yeah. Brenda, Brenda, you want to speak to that, please?
In the elementary teachers, they have the opportunity to go in during those planning times and work with teachers on PD and answer their questions as well. I thought about, we use a train-the-trainer model when we are implementing strategies. And what that means is representatives from grade levels will come, and we will have an opportunity for them to collaborate and talk about what that experience is like, and then go back to their school and share. Thought about team meetings. That's where they have their PLCs as well, and they can share ideas of best practices that are happening during their team meeting. And we, in our plan, we have talked or expressed the importance of principals really making sure that those meetings, meetings are very meaningful and that they meet the needs of the teachers. So there are many opportunities in the school for that to happen.
We have a lot of elementary schools, and we have, there are a number of instructional coaches or instructional leaders in the elementary schools, and they come together on a regular basis, so that each school doesn't exist in isolation either. So those, those instructional leaders, reading coaches, math coaches, others, come together to share best practice and ideas.
And those coaches also go to the different schools. They share ideas with each other. So if I have an instructional coach, I may come to your school and share with your teachers as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim?
Dr. Register, real quick question. As prep for the meeting, we had the executive summary. Should I ignore that for now? I don't want to, I know most people, that's what I, yeah. I had reactions to that, but I don't, since other people can't see it, I don't know if you want me to talk about that offline or...
It's, it's up to you.
Let's see. I'm torn. Really quickly, well, I do appreciate the, since the last time we gathered to talk about this, the more explicit focus on the quality of teaching and learning in the classroom, which I think is popping a lot more in this particular plan, equity and excellence, and then transformational leadership, which I felt I couldn't quite see. It was embedded in the previous version, but this is, now it's top line. So, yes, and in fact, there's a lot of language within the executive summary that I deeply appreciated around organizational redesign that transforms the traditional role of the central office from a top-down management system, more to a system designed to provide meaningful support to schools, things like that. There's lots of, I think, important, well, it's nuanced relative to these things, but I would say it's not nuanced. It's actually core to driving change. One thought is, I mean, I was so, and I loved all the perspectives, you know, from, from the panel. And particularly, just to call out though Clint for one second, it was interesting, as you were talking, Clint, I really appreciated what you were saying in terms of instructional rounds, the rigor that I'm perceiving that you have within the school building, in terms of getting into the classroom, you know, doing the work, coaching. And it was something, my one reflection in reading the executive summary, and then in this, is, I have potentially lots of reflections, but one really that, I was just thinking about fidelity, which we've referenced is just really critical. You know, we have the plan, and then you got to work the plan. And I was thinking about my, yeah, like, potential analog, you know, to think about, like, the level of rigor, and whether or not we're all normed on that. So my other favorite topic besides education is football. And so like, if you look, let's say, at the Titans, like, you, when you look at someone like, let's say, Jake Locker, there's a level of expectation, right? So he's reached the pinnacle of his field. Like, he is a quarterback on an NFL team. It doesn't get better than that. So he's like already a Rara Avos. There's, he's like one in a gajillion, and everyone strives. And yet, we would probably all be outraged as fans if we knew, if we thought that he wasn't, after every single practice and after every single game, reviewing the game tape, and debriefing with his teammates, and talking with his, not just his head coach, but all the various position coaches, and then reviewing the plays, and looking and saying, okay, what do we do right there? And what do we need to change for next time? And then what do we do poorly? And what is, what was behind that? And how do we then change that for the next time? I mean, it is just rigorous. And this is football, which I know is life or death for lots of people in the world. But I would posit that, you know, that, yes, maybe, that's fine if you have that opinion, but kids are much more important. And teaching is such an art and a science, and it really does take that level of rigor and coaching and a total adherence to excellence, as though it is life or death, the way people sometimes treat football and Titans performance. And so, and so all of us, you know, we expect that, you know, of the Titans, we would say, absolutely, that's, I mean, we'd be outraged if we thought they were doing anything less than that, that, like, constant rigor. And so I guess that's more, like, if I was running a school, this is what I'd be focused on, is just like, literally, what does it look like in the day-to-day? And that is, yeah, I'm just interested in that whole field. And whether that, in particular, within all of this, is really going to come through to the average, like, to the principals, everyone collectively, to parents, to teachers, and whatnot. Because there is this whole cycle, it's just like a continuous improvement. And so one final thought on this is that we, when I think about supporting teachers, I mean, so right, we have, this is just based on the data, we have literally thousands of teachers who are incredible. And when I think about the best teachers, they, they're like Jake Locker. They just want to get better. And I really think if we set the environment, and we actually had that kind of rigor, it would not be a threat. It could be. In the wrong leader, in the wrong leader's hands, that could be a total threat, where it's just like, it feels punitive. It feels like it's not about continuous improvement. It's just evaluative. But you could imagine if we felt like, you know what, in, in the classroom, we think that reform, or progress, or pick the word, achievement, you know, growth, is driven by, right, the interactions between teacher and child, over and over and over, and we're not quality of those interactions over and over. And that, like, literally millions of those occur in our, in our classrooms all, every day. And the quality of that, those interactions, is really what adds up to change, acceleration, or lack thereof, or even pulling back. And so I just think, like, yeah, like, when I think about the execution then, and whether or not we're set up to do that, like, that level of rigor and excellence and adherence to, you know, forget about the numbers for just a second, but just like really increasing the quality of teaching and learning in the classroom, that's what I envision. Because I feel like if it's good enough for the Titans, it's good enough for our kids. And so I just, I think that's the, yeah, I don't know what to, it's my general...
Well, I think you used the, the right phrase a while ago. It's a concept of continuous improvement. And I think that that has to permeate all of this strategic plan, every, every piece of it, that we, that we want to build a culture of continuous improvement in the school system. So it, so it, so I think it is embedded in this plan, all the way through it.
Any other comments? I'll get back to you. Ms. Shepard?
Like my colleagues, I love this plan. I think it's great. I love the, the focus and the definitions on all the level of educational experiences for every, every child. I think it's so important to start at the K-level and, and go through, through high school. It's, it's just imperative that we do that. And we've been talking for a long time on social and emotional growth and learning. And it is very important. And I know that we are, as you stated, you know, one of seven cities that has a Castle grant. That grant, I'm sure, will expire at some point in time. And how, so how do we make sure that we sustain that growth in that area?
Well, actually, the Castle grant may continue on into the future. But I think, but, but, but when you talk about any program, or grant, or project that you're taking on like that, what's working has to be institutionalized. And so we have a, we have a director, Carla Kringle, is she in here? There you are, back there, who, who organizes our social-emotional learning program with the Castle Foundation. And it's a, it's a, it's a start now, but, but really, but we're, we're incorporating that into the daily behaviors in our schools now. Morning meetings in elementary schools, that's an example of the social-emotional learning that's going on. A lot of the work that we're doing in our high school is building the relationships. So it's creating a culture.
And I have one other question. We, well, a couple of other questions, I guess. When we talk about 88% of our high school students will graduate with, within four years or one semester, do we have the stats yet for 2013?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. I didn't think we did. And one other, when we talk about the goals for empowering, the second bullet point was the percentage of students and families rating their school's program favorably will increase significantly. What would significant look like?
Steady trend upward. And what we want to do is monitor year to year on a, this is probably oversimplified, but, but student assessment of school climate, and their engagement in school, their positive engagement in school. So we're going to measure that. That's a part of, we're actually working with the Castle Foundation to develop some of these measures now. So it's an annual measure, and we want to see an increase to where 100% of our students feel like they're welcome, that they're a part of the school family, 100%. We don't need anyone not to feel that way. And so that's, but, but how quickly we get there is another matter. I think that's one with some intentionality in our district. We can, we can grow very quickly to be 100%.
Great.
By 2018.
And thank you all for, for being here tonight. It's been great.
Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for being here. I agree with Ms. Kim. I think the, in terms of the presentation and the way this, this information's been laid out tonight, there's a lot more clarity than perhaps we saw previously. And I think there's also, you know, these, these kind of three high-leverage strategies, you know, speak to me and makes sense, you know, quality teaching, equity and excellence. I want to talk more about that. And, and, and leadership. I mean, I think if, you know, if we think of the school system as a system of 82,000 kids, I mean, it, it seems overwhelming, and it is. But if we also think of it, you know, as a system of 140-something principals, you know, that, you know, seems like, you know, a, an entry point that, that is really meaningful, and you can drive very scalable improvement very quickly. So I want to take a point of personal privilege. I'm proud to be the member of the board that represents Glencliff High School and, in South Nashville. So Jacob, we're so glad you're in Nashville, you and your family, very proud. And, and if you need a recommendation letter to Stanford, I'm in. Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll argue for it. We'll co-sign it. Clint, thank you for everything that you're doing. You know, Clint Wilson says, if you take care of the student, the test takes care of itself. And I think that that really is the right approach. At Glencliff, the teachers have dedicated space where they're meeting to discuss every student every day, and looking at the wall, and, and focusing on the individual students. So I, we really do appreciate all the work that you and the Glencliff team are doing to, to move forward. Really extraordinary gains also, which we could talk about as well. So to the point of high-leverage strategies for the district, I've got a question for Clint. You know, if you had to isolate the three highest leverage strategies that are working in your building that are driving your gains right now, what, what are those, what are those three high-leverage strategies?
Three?
I know, right?
That's kind of been a topic the last week or two, when people have asked me, what do you think it is? And it's going to be hard to identify just three. But if I had to pick the top, one is to focus on literacy. We know if we cannot get kids reading on grade level and beyond, they're not going to, they're not going to exceed in life. They're not going to excel in life. They're not going to do well on any standardized test, because every test deals with reading. So that's definitely one area. The second, I believe, is what we've done with data, that we're using data to drive instruction. And instead of being reactive to it, we're trying to be more proactive. It's having those data conversations with kids before a summative assessment ever gets there. And Mike Rutherford probably says it best, which is some training provided by the district. It's called a mid-course correction. It's realizing that where you're going is not getting you there in the data, and you've got to change. So it's being able to make those, have that flexibility to make changes along the way, so that we can achieve those goals. And third, I would say it goes back to collaboration. We cannot be a school system of, of teachers closing doors. And with the networks, with the collaborative teaming, teachers having conversations about kids and about the collaborative teaming, teachers having conversations about kids and about teaching and about learning and sharing best practices. That's where we're going to see transformational growth, because we're not just closing a door, you do what you need to, it's open our door, let's do this together. So if I had to pick three, that would be the three that would be the driving forces of change.
Makes sense. So one final comment, just to the point of open doors, that, you know, the, the culture at Glencliff, I mean, you feel it when you walk in the door, but you, you can see it, you know, virtually every day, including the weekend. Glencliff is, is a hub for the community. And whether it's parent university on the weekends, whether it's our New American Community using the, the building for parent engagement and other things over the weekend, I mean, it's a constant turn of activity at Glencliff. And that's, that energy is, I think, part of, of what's happening there. And that's, that's very exciting. And also, Clint, you mentioned earlier the, the situation with United Neighborhood Health Services, the clinic that's located there on the property that serves the students as well as, as others in the neighborhood. I just want to say thank you to Kathy Sendback, who, is she still here? She was here earlier, with Metro Legal. There were some zoning questions a few months ago about whether that clinic could continue to operate there, and Kathy really dug into that issue and helped solve that. Is it everything resolved?
Yes.
All right, good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. I just, I want to ask a quick question. Slides 11 and 12, there's a, there's an asterisk, and I'll, I'll read it so you don't have to flip to it, but 2011-12 data are used, progress targets will be adjusted with the 2012-13 baseline data. I didn't see necessarily where we're actually referencing any 11-12 data. And to put this into football lingo, is the second sentence, progress targets will be adjusted with 2012-13 data. The ability for some, does that give somebody the ability to call an audible and lower the goal?
Not, not to lower the goal. We need to, we wanted to look at the data this year, and of course, we're just getting that now, just getting it out, but goals would not be changed on this without your engagement and our engagement.
I'll, I guess I'll follow and say that I am incredibly happy with the, the last slide, or second to last slide, 22. By executing this plan with fidelity, we will elevate MNPS to be the highest-performing urban district in the United States in probably the better part of a decade of following the district and three years sitting at this table. We haven't said that out loud aggressively. So I'm someone who has often-
We don't believe we can do it. We would not say it.
I'm somebody who's often beaten the drum to move fast. And five years to, to becoming the best district in the United States would, would, I think, make all of us sitting here, certainly everyone in our county ecstatic. So thank you for setting the goal. Now, my follow-up question to that is how do we define, and maybe this deserves a, a follow-up, but how do we define highest-performing urban district?
That's probably a moving target to, I answer you honestly, but if we meet all of these goals, then I'll propose that we'll be right there at the top. And we'll look at what's going on in Denver and Montgomery County and those places.
Yeah.
But it's, it's about setting a goal for where we think, that we think we can achieve and get there.
I'd love to, over the next year, and I, I, this would certainly be with the, the board's indulgence, I'd love to, to have a understanding how this was set, what we think our peer districts are and what their five-year goals are. To really make sure that, and I don't necessarily, I mean, I'd love to be number one, but if we're in the top 10 or 15, I'd be thrilled.
It'd be great if all the urban, a lot, a collection of urban districts in this country could do these things. And I think there are some that have the will to do this and some that are working hard and a lot of them that aren't. But I think we have the potential to be there, and I think we have to recognize that.
And so I guess the absolute definition of highest performing, do we have one? Is it a, is it a 21 on the ACT? Is it X number of people proficient and advanced in, in a subject? Is it a number, is it a percent graduating?
So I, so I think it's all of the goals that we've identified here. It's a collective, if you will, and it's not just the test score, but it's the social and emotional development of our children and how our kids feel about the schools that they attend. That 100%, if we have 100% of our students' grades K-12, who say they are in a nurturing and positive environment, they're at home, I think that's a great step toward being the best school system in the country, in my opinion. The development, the support for students, those, those, the soft skills are the wrong way to, that's the wrong way to say it. Soft goals that are not based just on an academic test score are very important. And we need to, we need to strive for that also in this school district. And that's a challenge, that's a challenge in urban school systems.
I agree. I'm, I'm wondering if, if you would consider, and you don't have to answer this now, but adding this slide 22 somewhere into the executive summary, that goal. I mean, we, you know, we do on page 11 have the ultimate goal, college and career readiness. But to the extent that this document might live five years and be a roadmap, it would be great to have that ultimate goal end up in here in really to, easy-to-read language.
Yes, we can do that.
Ms. Frog.
Well, thanks, everybody. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight, first of all. And I, I too am pretty excited about this plan. I had a top 10 list of my, top 10 wish list for goals for the district, and I've checked them off as you guys were talking. And we've hit nearly everyone. There are a few items that require, they're kind of beyond our control, that require some partnership with the state, but we've hit almost all the rest of them that I had, so that's pretty exciting. A lot of buzzwords that I loved, thinking back to my campaign, this is a lot of my campaign platform, so I'm thrilled we're moving in this direction. I'm, I'm excited about the emphasis on the whole child, the extracurriculars, the service learning, that's fantastic. Collaboration, that's such a key word. And then as far as just particular goals, I just had a few questions. When you talked in the excellence and equity and excellence strategy, you talked about targeting certain populations, and I was wondering if you had an idea of what that would look like at this point?
It's a, it's, it, it really is, manifests itself in the diversity plan to a large extent, but when, you know, we need to look at our, at allocation of resources, where Chris Henson and his folks are studying that carefully now. So what does it take for us to have, expect great success in every one of our schools? And equity does not mean, and you've heard this before, but I'll say it, equity does not mean equal. It means providing the resources in each location that are necessary for children in that school to be successful. And we are, there's a lot of work going on now with school-based budgeting and student weighting systems that, that will be, be happening during this school year, and hopefully a lot of it before budget time, that will get to that equity of resources. The greatest inequity in school systems in this country, from high poverty to high socioeconomic schools, is quality of teachers. We've got to deal with quality of teachers in our district. And we have a strategic compensation plan that's a part of this plan that we're working on. And the part of that strategic compensation plan has to be, how do we recruit and keep the top-quality teachers, no gap, no, no, no difference in quality in all of our schools across our district? That's a challenge. But that, but the, but the work that Human Capital's doing to recruit and keep good teachers in all of our schools, to look at strategic compensation models that can work for us is just one example of how that's done. And I think if you look, if you dig, get in-depth in the plan, you'll see a number of strategies there that are focused on equity.
And, and also, just as another way of looking at that, are we, are we looking at, I know we're looking at intercession, sort of in targeting children that need more intervention.
Right.
But are we looking at enrichment programs or camps or those sorts of things? And I've had some conversations with people in the district about maybe making after-school activities more engaging, instead of just having them, you know, sit at table, at tables and have snacks and those kinds of things.
Well, the whole, that, that leads us into the next topic for tonight about school calendar, but time's a variable that we have to learn how to use. And there's more than one way to do that. And oftentimes, it comes with a cost, but yes, we are looking at before and after-school programs. And the, the community achieves work that, that Tony Majors is spearheading is a significant attempt to look at that equity and providing community-based services in high-needs areas that don't exist in all areas. And so I, I think those, those things are important.
Okay, a couple more. I'm sorry, just a few little. Okay, so what I'm understanding about the teacher development is that there is going to be a lot of flexibility as to how it's being implemented with regard to school and type, grade level?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite-
I'm sorry, the teacher development. I'm, I'm excited because we're talking about-
Professional development.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Yeah, I did say teacher development. Professional development. Because I think, you know, that what I'm hearing from a lot of people is that not that, I mean, we, we have development set up, but it needs to be very meaningful collaboration, you know, has to be part of that. And, and I love the idea that we are having time set aside in classrooms for teachers to come together and share ideas, principles. And so, so, what was my question?
About flexibility and professional development.
Yeah, exactly. So what I was, what I was hearing from everyone is that, I'm sure what I'm excited about, is, is, yeah, how, and so from, within different grade levels, we're having, in different schools, we're having flexibility?
Yes, so, so I think a basic principle in professional development, the way, the best way, the best return for the buck is job embedded. And, and teachers need opportunities to work together in their schools to, for profession, and, and professional development needs to be incorporated into what they're doing in their schools. And it does need to have a great deal of flexibility. I wish I had the slide that I saw today, but we have a slide on the percentage of Title One money that's flowing directly to schools. And the, we've increased to about 85% of the total now, being directly allocated to schools. And we have some additional Title One money. We got a little bit more this year, almost $2 million, than we anticipated that was earlier projected. That's flowing through to the schools. And so they're getting an increase, and I think this is an announcement, that just turned into an announcement. But the percentage of funds that's controlled by the principals and the schools is there. A lot of that's professional development. There, and when it comes to professional development, there are some things that we have to do on a district-wide basis, Common Core. You know, we have to, we have to do Common Core training, we have to do literacy training, but there aren't that many. There's the chart. Is that right? There you go. Tamra, you continue to surprise me. So, 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 you know, so there are some things that we systemically have to offer for all teachers, but what we really have to do is systemically offer a way to allow teachers to get the individualized professional development that, that they need. That part, that's personalized also. When you, when you look at the lever of personalization, that applies to teachers and leaders in our school system, too. So it is incorporated.
Okay. And the, the one thing I did not hear incorporate, just as part of the strategic plan, I think we're doing a lovely job, because we have Shelley Baldwin making cookies for parents, is how to engage parents at a, you know, a district level. And I, I think it's a hard question, but-
It, it really is. And, but, because we've struggled with that some in this district, the larger you get, the more impersonal you get, the more difficult it becomes. Now Shelley did a great job the other night, and we have great plans for Parent Advisory Council, but parental engagement best occurs at, from school to school, in individual schools. And what we have to do, I mean, you know, when you get to the system, when you get to the clusters, it's much more difficult to get a high percentage of people involved. And frankly, it's not as important as individual parent, teacher, school engagement. And when you look at the empower concept in, in here, and, and some of the others, parental engagement has to become a very big part of that. We've talked about our diversity sum, and we know that, that many of our parents are economically challenged in work, and we have single-parent families, and we've got to do an outreach. We've got to walk communities, we've got to do things like that. For many of our English learner parents and children, we've got to learn how to effectively engage them and involve them in school. Because I tell you, if you don't do that at a much higher level than what we're doing now, it won't work. But the, but efforts like what Clint Wilson's doing at Glencliff, there's an engagement there. And, and, and it really, really has to be a very organized outreach and engagement for parents. The work that Tony Majors is doing with Community Achieves is very instrumental in causing this to happen. And we, we see, we feel great progress in that area, but we have a long way to go in that area also. Shelley, you want to say something?
I have one question.
Um, I, new chair to the whole thing. And, and my biggest issue is communication, being a parent in the system and feeling like the more communication you have, the better off everyone is. The more ideas you generate, the more things can be accomplished. With that in mind, I set up a Facebook page and a Twitter account for our PAC so that people could get updates from the PAC and just, and I pull stuff from the metro side of what's going on with individual schools. But I just, I want people to participate. I want people to get their ideas, their concerns, all of it on the table so we can address it. Because if we don't know it exists, we can't address it. So that's my goal, is to get as many people to the table as I can to help move our system forward.
Can I ask one more question? I swear I'm done. This is, it's a short one. So the, okay, on measurement. So I'm with Elisa. This is all fantastic, like how do we know this is really moving forward? Your, the dashboard is going to be updated quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, awesome, okay. That's it.
Okay. And before we go to second rounds, I want to say, you so stole what I was going to say. I couldn't believe that we got all the way around and we didn't talk about parental involvement. Thank you for that. And Shelley, thank you. I have actually been following the Facebook page and the Twitter page, and I share it with everybody I know. And that is pretty amazing, the information that's out there. It's, it's pretty fantastic to be able to, from a parent's perspective, to be able to send it out there, and parents know that this is just for me. So thank you for that. And that was one of my biggest concerns. I wanted to understand, this is a very aggressive and very impressive plan, but without the parental engagement, it's just a plan. Because, you know, speaking for myself as a, and as a very involved parent, there are a lot of parents in my district who are very involved in their children's education, and it's made the difference in how they perform academically. So thank you for being involved. And Jacob, thank you for being, being here and talking about how this plan is helping you. We appreciate that. So we have another piece of the agenda, so we'll wrap this up with a couple of minutes. Mr. Pinkston, you go right ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to build on something Mr. Hayes said earlier, this notion of, of us being the highest-performing urban district in the United States and how we measure that and how that, that happens. I know that Mr. Hayes's professional expertise is, is real estate, and I believe in real estate, there's a term called market comps, right? So I think, you know, what I'd like to know is, is who do we believe our comparable districts are in America? And, and what are the comps? And how, you know, can we monitor where we are relative to where they are? I think, you know, one logical place to look would be districts in other park states, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness of College and Careers. That's, you know, 20-something states consortium, of which Tennessee is one, and that will at least give us, when those tests happen within the next couple of years, at least give us a, a, a way to measure where our proficiency, student proficiency is relative to other districts in other states, because for the first time, we'll all be taking the same test. So that seems one, like one logical measure, but not the only one. Maybe, you know, our market comps are the CRPE districts, the Center for Reinventing Public Education, or maybe, you know, it's, it's the Council of Great City Schools. But anyway, I'd love to, to be thinking forward about, you know, who we believe the competition is, so to speak, and, and how do we, you know, measure our progress against them? So that's just one thought, building on what Mr. Hayes said.
So one of the first things I also wrote down was around the, the parent's role in this. And I wouldn't go so far as to say-
And I wouldn't go so far as to say that without the parental involvement, the plan kind of all falls apart. But I think we just need to step back and really understand what we've been presented with today. And I think what we've been presented with, and we call it a strategic plan, is really a framework for our schools to develop their strategies on how they're going to move the bar and move their students' performance forward. So what we have here is, is a framework, and it really won't start to materialize into something that tells us how we're doing until each of the school's SIPs get rolled up into this, right? So just want to be very clear, that what we still need to see are the implementation strategies, which is where we'll begin to see what schools that have struggled over decades to get the level of parental involvement that research tells us, and that we believe as educators and parents are necessary to recognize the, the level of success we're positing is possible with this, in this plan. The one thing that we talk a lot about as well is the fact that our district continues to grow. So right now, we've created a framework to move the bar for 82,000 children. In five years from now, that could be 100,000 children. So even though we say that the goals are, are not going to change, and we're very uncomfortable with changing those numbers, I think the other factor that we haven't considered is the growth of the district, which really is going to have a big impact, I think, on what the SIPs look like, because then parental involvement starts to look a little bit different. And then the school-based budgeting, which I am extremely excited about, especially for schools within District One, whose needs, and every school says it, our school's not like anybody else's, whose needs really kind of speak to something that you, you said, obviously Clint, about schools being, not being this, your school being different, but also the, the thing you shared about lighting a fire versus filling a pail. And the thing that I want us all to recognize is that many of the pails that we're filling are filled with holes. And we can pour all the same stuff into those pails, and they won't all stick, because not only are, there are lots of holes in some of the pails, and a few holes in the other pails, and some of those holes are bigger in some of our pails, and they're small in others. And until we can come up with, and you've done a little bit of it, obviously with the clinic, but what I would expect to see in an SIP, supported by school-based budgeting, supported by the capital needs becoming something I see in here, and not something that sits separately, is an SIP that respects the fact that a lot of these pails have holes. And so we've talked a lot about the academic, we've, we, I think it's implied, and we can infer it from what we talk about with social and emotional learning, but when we, until we can address the dearth of cultural capital that is concentrated in a lot of our districts and in a lot of our clusters and schools, the mental and emotional challenges that our students come to school with, until we can address, obviously, the social challenges that our students have, we can't get there. It requires the ability for the schools to baseline our students. Because with any strategic plan, what is implied, or I think is often inferred from the plan, is that these students are all capable of recognizing the things that are in the circles around them. And today, they're not. Today, the students, even within a single school, and even within a single classroom, are not all at a point where they can recognize that on our timeline. And so when we get to the point where we're ready to share the SIPs, those are the kinds of things that I hope as, as central office staff, and lead principals, and, and other leaders within the district, we're encouraging and supporting our principals to document as a part of their strategies to recognize these things for each of their students. Even what we've touched on a little bit around the amount of testing that we do, and we've asked for that analysis to be done, and I think it's a great thing. If you take care of the students, the tests will take care of themselves, but tests still eat time. And so, and I think that that's another piece of this that we shouldn't forget. And so if I were to sort of summarize, the most impressive thing that I've heard is probably the first time that we've had a meeting that talked about a plan, that mentioned several other components that we recognize and respect, still need to be pulled into this. So I'll say it for the third time, the school-based budgeting, the analysis of the testing that we're doing, the capital needs, because we have to ensure that there is an infrastructure that can support our teachers being able to deliver on this. So, you know, there's a lot of passion in our teachers, and great teachers wanting to be greater is wonderful, but parental involvement is great, but there's a whole piece that needs to undergird this to make all of this possible. And it's not only baselining our resources, as you've touched upon, which includes our facilities for our, our teachers and our students, but also baselining by providing a wraparound support system within our schools to whatever extent is possible, so that the students can be at a point where they can receive either that that fire will actually take hold, or the bucket will get filled, whatever analogy you want to go with. But until we can get our students to the point where they have the capacity to receive what we're giving, this will continue to be a plan that sits on paper. And it looks really good, and it will be really impressed by, but for it to be realized, there's a lot more that needs to happen within the SIPs. And I hope that, because they don't all look academic, and they don't all have a percentage associated with them, and they're not all compared to another district, but they are with respect to the fact that our individual schools have individual students within them that have unique needs, that transcend academics, and actually block the ability for that academic learning to take place.
So proud of this board. I am so proud of the work you guys are doing, but this is pretty cool, when you think about it. You know, I don't want to make it sound simple, but when you think about the nine people that are sitting around this table, everybody has a different perspective on what they see in this plan, but it's all relative to, to the work that's being done. And so I say to you, Dr. Register, thanks to you, and thanks to your staff for putting together this great, great first step. We do appreciate that. So, any final comments on this?
And I want to thank my guests for making me look good. Thank you very much. They're all a part of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate you being here. And we'll move into the district calendar presentation.
I'll say it in the mic.
Yeah, no pressure, Larry, thank you.
So, we, as you know, the, there's not been a clear majority support for any one particular calendar. We've had a balanced calendar that we've proposed, and we've had a, a calendar with an extended school year, extended number of days that costs about $17 million. Chris modified the figure a little bit because it wasn't, wasn't quite two weeks. But after the debate, and after getting opinion from a lot of different people, we also proposed a compromise calendar, and you've had a copy of that. And I've asked Larry to bring two things tonight for you to look at. One is the compromise calendar, and I think you've probably run that out about three years, is that right?
I have done that, and I didn't, I've got it in two separate packets. One is two calendars, two different calendars for next year. And then the other packet is for the two years out from that. Is that okay?
So that, that, that's what we'd like to show you tonight. The compromise calendar is one that we introduced late at the last board meeting, so we've, I know that you've had that, and we've got that for you to look at now, and we'll be glad to entertain any questions about these calendars. We're not going to make a formal presentation. Well, I might ask Larry to hit the highlights of this compromise for the first year and let you see what the features of that looks like.
What I've just given you... Technology, what can I say? The first copy is the balanced calendar, two weeks in the fall and spring, four days of intercession in each. And in the second semester, you'll note that spring, well, fall break, I'm sorry, spring break is the last two weeks of March with intercession, and the first three days of April. Easter Sunday is April 5th, so we wouldn't have to have an extra spring holiday by including April 3rd in with spring break. The second page is what, what we termed a compromise. Instead of starting school on April 1st, we would start on the first Wednesday, April 6th, August 6th. No intercession in the fall. It'd be fall break. In the spring, we would have three days of some intercession-type activities, March 18th through the 20th, and then spring break, the 23rd through the 27th. Now you'll note that the spring break is a different week, and the reason that is, if we, if we had the three-day intercession period beginning March 25th, that's going to give us 54 days in that third grading period. That's an awfully long time. We can have spring break whenever you want it to be, but that's just the reason for the difference there. And even in the first calendar, the third grading period is 52 days, which is quite lengthy as well. The end of school would be May 28th for students on the first calendar, May 27th for students on the second calendar.
Any questions on the calendars? Sure, Ms. Shepherd?
It wasn't at the last board meeting, but it was at a different meeting that we had, and, well, let me back up. At the last board meeting, we did have a parent speak to the fact that we need to start after Labor Day and end before Memorial Day. She went to great lengths to say why. And then you did some research as to why that is not feasible. If you would share that, I would really appreciate that.
Thanks for putting me on the spot.
It's my job.
Basically, it's impossible unless we had like 155-day school year. If we started after Labor Day, the school year would, and this is with no fall break, no spring break, school year would not end until the third week of June.
No pushback from that, I'm sure.
Thank you, Larry.
Any other questions?
That's a good old days question. And what people don't remember about the good old days is that the school years weren't as long as they are now.
Exactly.
And I can speak to that. The, when, when I was a student, in my first five or so years of teaching, the school year was 175 days. But in addition to that, some of the days that students were not in school were counted as instructional days. We had three parent conference days that counted as instructional days, two in the fall, one in the spring. Then we had in-service, or professional development days, they were, they were optional days. There was Fair Day in September. That was a teacher in-service day. There was another day, I think in October, Middle Tennessee Education Association meetings. You remember these. And then the first three days of Easter, or spring break, were in-service days. We had to, teachers had to accumulate professional development points, and they used those days to accumulate those points. But they counted as instructional days. So in reality, we were only in school 167 days.
Mr. Pinkston?
Okay, so my teachers at Overton High School told me that there are no stupid questions, but I'm getting ready to ask what might be a stupid question. Why are we having this conversation? I don't understand why we're debating a calendar right now. I mean, absent clear and compelling evidence from parents in the public that what we're doing is not working, and we know from our polling that, that people are basically kind of split on the issue of balance versus traditional, and then absent the availability of clear and compelling research that says we need to be doing something different, I'm just not sure where we're going and why we're having the conversation. And I think the thing that, that makes it most difficult for families is when, you know, we change things every couple of years. And that's the thing, if people get into a routine, they get used to something, and then we change it without, you know, any clear rationale for doing it. So I'm just not inclined to go in a different direction. But, but is there some, I don't know, timing or impetus for this conversation?
It's my fault. We, there were, there were enough questions being asked before we proposed the balanced calendar, and there were enough questions and enough disagreement being, being raised that I felt like it was important to give you more information and more time to make a, make an informed decision. There, there, there was no vote, when we, it wasn't a vote, Meredith will correct me on this, but when we took an opinion poll, there was no majority. It was, it was pretty evenly split. From, from my, from my point of view, this, this calendar this year is different from last year's. It has a week longer in fall break. It's a, it's a, it's a nine-two balanced calendar. Nine weeks on, two weeks off. That's fall break. Nine weeks on, two weeks off. That's winter break. Nine weeks on, two weeks off. That's spring break, and then finishes at the end of the year. It's a little bit longer, it's a little more spread than the one we had last school year. And we were getting enough question raised about it till it seemed like it was something that we need to be more deliberative with.
And I, you know, I don't mind making a change, I just want to make sure we're making an airtight case for it when we do. I mean, if we're going to, you know, sort of say, do this, not that, I just would love to have, to have more information.
So, so as I think about it, I think, to me, the only choice, the only two choices I would recommend are the balanced calendar that's been proposed here, or the compromise. And what I can see doing with, and I've been disappointed in the balanced calendar in this respect. We didn't have enough money because of federal budget cuts to really support the intercessions like we would want to. I think it's an advantage to spread the calendar, so that summer, summer break is shorter, a shorter period of time. I think that works to the advantage of a great majority of the children in our district. So, so that's, that's, that's the plus for me. I also know that there are a lot of people who disagree with that approach. And so is there a compromise that would work? And I think this compromise would work. It adds three days for spring break, and what I would propose, and this was a suggestion made by one of the parents who spoke at the public hearing, is that we look at something in the summer for children who might need extra time. So let's, so let's have a jump start. Let's have a jump start in the fall before school starts for English learners. Let's have a summer camp for economically disadvantaged children. And I think, based on the response we've gotten from a lot of our partners in town who've really stepped up to provide activities and, and programs for children, I think we could get a lot of support in doing that. So I see the compromise as a way to get some of the features that we would like to have, and, and perhaps be more amenable to a larger percentage of our parents and teachers.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you. From a procedural standpoint, at our next board meeting, when we do vote on a... From a procedural standpoint, at our next board meeting, when we do vote on a calendar, will these two be the ones that are in front of us, or will we have?
What is your suggestion?
My suggestion would be to make your top two recommendations and don't leave four or five. I don't know if that's the will of the board.
I think Dr. Gentry is about to jump out of her seat over there.
I think it would be very hard for us to build consensus around one of five.
Agreed.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
So I would certainly appreciate your, your.
My recommend, I'll tell you, my recommendation right now would be to either support the balanced calendar or the compromise.
Which would be one of, one of these two.
Correct.
I'd love to follow on, first, thank you for that and for that recommendation. And then I'd love to follow on the comment you just made around summer camps. You know, to the extent, when we first contemplated the balanced calendar, we talked a lot about the, the need to shorten the summer to assist English language learners with the summer language loss. And I don't know if we're trying to target high poverty or high poverty and the EL population are probably, probably overlap quite a bit. I would hope that if we do look at that, we might tailor those summer enrichment activities or camps to that English language learner population, and it would seem that we could have a deep ability to reach out to the faith-based community and other partners of MMPS who help to attract immigrants to the state to participate with us on a voluntary basis to create those types of opportunities to, to continue to expose the children to English.
We'd do everything we could to do that. I want to refer back to the comments that Dr. Gentry was making earlier about the bucket with the holes in it. And we've got a lot of holes to fill for economically disadvantaged children and English learner children, and one way to do that is to do, time's a variable. And so I think we have to be very intentional about filling some of the holes in the bucket, if you will, for those children. And, and that's the, that's the original intent of a balanced calendar. And I will say, and I'm not going to put it back on the table, but I am in favor of a longer school year. Time's a variable that will work positively for all of our children, not just some of them. And I think ultimately, we should look at that. But with the financial challenges that we have ahead of us, I would not put that ahead of universal pre-K. Universal pre-K might be the most important factor that we could add to really support economically disadvantaged children in our community, and so there are other things that we need, that, that, other priorities that I would put ahead.
Any other comments? I want to make one comment. I'd really like to see us not have to approve a calendar every two years. I would really like to have one calendar approved and be done with it, and every year, we're looking at the same calendar every single year.
So Larry can speak to this better than I can, and he's worked up three or, three or four years' worth of proposals that fit the compromise calendar. And, and so, and so I'm going to borrow one of Mr. Pinkston's terms that I've heard him use before, guardrails or parameters.
You really need to have that.
So, so you know, what we've talked about is not, not appropriate, okay? So, so what we've really talked about is trying to, is starting the first Wednesday of August, unless it's on the first, second, or third. And so, you know, so we don't start school before August 4th, but we, it's either the first or second Wednesday in August, that we have a one-week fall break, that we have that eight days in the spring, that we have two weeks in the winter holidays, and that we try to end the Friday before Memorial Day. But sometimes Memorial Day comes really early, and we can't do that. So, so sometimes we're going to need to leak into the next week like the proposal that's here. So setting those parameters, I think, works, and Larry's got a, he hadn't, he hadn't filled in all the blanks, but he can show you what the next two or three years looks like, I think. Larry, did I steal your thunder?
Thank you.
Okay.
We're going to wrap this up in about three minutes, so talk quick. No pressure.
Appreciate that.
Hey, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. The first calendar, and again, these are very basic. Obviously, they're not ready for.
Approval.
But in 1516, the school year could begin on August 5th. The next day is a metro election day. One week of fall break. Conference day on November 3rd. School would get out for the winter holidays on December 18th. Proceed to March, and you'll see the three days there for intercession-type activities, followed by a week of spring break. School would end for students May 23rd, which is a week before Memorial Day.
Larry, speak to how you treat spring break. Are you, are you getting it to the same week every spring?
I'm trying to, yes. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Now, in 2016-17, we've got an interesting dilemma, and you've got sort of two drafts for that same year. The first one, we start on the second Wednesday, August 10th, in line with not starting before August 4th. That cuts down the number of instructional days in the first semester significantly, about two weeks shorter than the spring semester. And that's going all the way to December 20th before the winter holidays. March, the same three days there, followed by spring break, and school ends for students on May 31st, two days after Memorial Day, would end June 1st for teachers. But if we look at what it would happen if we started on the first Wednesday, August 3rd, we can end school before the winter holidays on December 16th instead of December 20th, and we can get out the Wednesday before Memorial Day. So we're not sure what's more important to you, starting later or ending before Memorial Day?
Having one calendar.
Sure. Go ahead.
The parents were so clear that they would like not, for their students not to have to take their EOCs after, after Memorial Day. So I would want to see us honor that as much as we can.
I think the way to do that is to just say we're starting the first Wednesday of August.
I would love to see this mocked up so that we could take, I would, just one vote on one calendar and be done with it. Because the going back and forth creates an issue with planning with, for so many reasons. So I would love to see this district get to the point where we have one calendar that is the same every year. Well, with the exception, of course, you know, the days are sliding back and forth, but the bringing it back every two years just causes extra stress that nobody needs.
So one thing's for sure, the first Wednesday in August will never be before August 1st.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really the way to do that.
There's your win right there.
So are you wanting to approve three years, three calendars for three, the following three years?
I think we want to approve a, an approach, a methodology, that we start the fir, and we end before, whatever that, so whatever it takes to do that. So I don't think it's looking at specific dates. It's, it's understanding what our, dare I say it, guardrails or parameters are, that there's X number of days within the school year at a minimum, that it ends prior to, and EOCs can happen before, what holiday is that?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, and that we start, you know, at least by the first of August. And that ought to get it.
We'll, we'll bring you that recommendation.
Perfect. And I'm, I'm pretty sure nobody has any other questions or comments. Ms. Frogue? Thank you.